Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. Again, thank you to Jen, Tim, and Ryan at East Hampton Media for their assistance, as always, in broadcasting this meeting. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely via Zoom conference application. Remote public meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic are the result of an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12th, 2020, allowing us to do so. I remind both members of the City Council and of the public to remain on mute until you are recognized by the chair. We have, before we begin, I also want to make an announcement that we have had a couple of unfortunate infiltration of a few meetings in the past week that were pretty unpleasant. If that happens tonight, I want everyone to be aware that I'm just going to end the meeting, and any votes that have been taken will count, and we will reschedule the conclusion of the meeting as soon as we can get the notification out to the public. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara, please, the roll call.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby. Erica Flood.
Here.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kozinski.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Here.
Owen Zaret.
Here.
And will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic, to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and justice for all. Thank you. I will take a motion to approve the minutes of January 20th.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Omar, did you want to make an amendment?
Yes, I want to make an amendment to the second and the last paragraph of the property report.
There was a missing name.
I want your motion.
Motion and a second.
No, we're just amending it, JP.
Just amending the...
To add Lindsey as the second.
Okay.
So, motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? And Barbara.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem, Salem's not here. Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're now going to have public speak. For those who are attending this meeting tonight, for public speak, for anything that is not on the public hearing, please remember that this is your turn to talk, and we will not be responding to your comments in any way. Tonight, we are limiting public speak to 30 minutes. If you would like to speak, use the raise your hand feature by selecting the participant option at the bottom of your screen, then click Raise Your Hand at the bottom of the participant window. You will have three minutes to make your comments. If the time runs out while you are making your comments, I'll ask you to finish the sentence you were speaking at the time. We do have a public hearing tonight at 6:15, so the public speak will be paused, and then if there's any time or anyone who would like to continue, we will continue it after the public hearing. All right, is there anyone who would like to speak during public speak at this time?
I see Natalie. Natalie has her hand raised.
Go ahead, Natalie.
Hello, Peg. How is everybody tonight?
Good.
So, I just wanted to kind of touch base. I want to thank the councilors that delivered the food for our community. I thank the councilors that chose to not just deliver up the lip service, but actually physically made themselves available and delivered meals across East Hampton. While our elected officials and administrators initially skirted and ignored and minimized the issues of food insecurity for those without transportation, the need is still there, and the need is still growing. I just want to stress again, thank you to all of the women and the first counselor of color for stepping up and for being actionable and delivering in a meaningful way. I yield my time.
Thanks, Natalie. Anyone else?
I see no one yet, as of yet.
Okay.
Natalie, you should lower your hand, Natalie.
Well, I can probably do that. There we go. All right, so we'll move on to communications from elected officials, boards, and committees. There is a document regarding the open space recreation plan requiring a letter of support from the council. Dan, do you want to speak to that?
Well, actually, I think that's why Jeff is here. Jeff, do you want to say something first?
Something you'd like to speak to?
First, thank you, yes. The open space plan is an important document for the city to have, and we've been working for quite a few months now on finalizing it. There's been two community meetings that we've completed in a really successful survey. We've had a lot of community input. I transmitted the plan to City Council in the packet of February 3rd, and I think the way that I described it is that a letter from City Council is optional, but it's important, I think, for City Council to see the plan and some of the action items, because, you know, in quite a few situations, you'll be considering, you know, financial requests, appropriations, and you'll see other things cross your path that are coming directly at a plan. So I wanted to include City Council, and our goal is to submit the plan to the state by the end of February, and then we'll, they'll have a couple of interactions with the state, and then we'll have an adopted plan. So it's really important. It's, as described in the transmittal, it's one of a couple of documents that we have that are really going to help us look to the future. So five, seven, 10 years out, it really gives us a document to be looking, looking towards when we're making decisions on open space recreation budgets, maintenance, and then, you know, new, new spaces as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but the goal would be to get a letter of support from, from City Council.
Counselor Rist?
I'm prepared to make that motion this evening unless a counselor objects, but Jeff, does this not help us with grant applications? Don't we need this in place, as I recall, for grant applications?
Yeah, there's a couple of programs out of the state that require a city or town to have an updated open space plan, so that is kind of a, that's a push, but we have found great success with our last plan, and having it, having it be a community, a community-supported plan has been really helpful for us. I will say that, you know, by, by supporting the plan, there's nothing that just automatically happens. You know, any kind of step or project coming out of that would, would fall into one of the categories of process. So similar to what the council will hear at their next meeting with the housing production plan, you know, nothing happens automatically, but it just shows that the community is supportive of the plan. I think state officials like to see that the plan has a range of support, so we're seeking the letter from the Conservation Commission, the Man-Hand Rail Trail Committee, the Planning Board, and that might be along with City Council. So we're trying to show the broad support.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion, Madam President.
Counselors, Zaret?
Is there any reason much with the housing production plan that we're not moving this to committee for review and recommendation?
We didn't feel it was necessary, Owen, because it really is a letter of support. It doesn't have any actionable part of it, because it's used, as I said, as Jeff said, to get grants in the future. There's nothing that the council can do other than support it, and we're not even, it's not even necessary. It just gives it a little more teeth when it comes to some of those programs, I think, that require grants. And I remember in the CPA committee, this was brought up a couple of times when we were looking at open space projects. So we didn't feel it was necessary. Of course, if you really want it, you can object to it.
The only thing I would add, Counselor Rist, and to the other councilors, is that the housing production plan by statute requires the City Council and Planning Board to vote to adopt it, which, so that's the required step for the housing production plan. So I think that made a lot of sense to send it to committee, since that's a formal action. And here, a letter of support is optional. The Planning Board is the only board who technically needs to bless it and send it to the state, so if there, if that distinguishes it, like with the housing production plan, the City Council formally will vote to adopt it, which is why I think we talked about sending it to committee and not for this one.
Counselor Peak?
I'm not objecting to voting on it tonight, but is, do we have, like, I'm looking through the packet, is there a letter of support for us to approve?
The President and Jeff have adopted one, not adopted, have.
I don't think it's in the packet. It is not in the packet. I have seen a, you know, we've, we have a letter with the wording, but I, for some reason, it's not in the packet. I don't know.
My motion was going to ask the council to authorize the President to submit a letter of support in the name of the...
Oh, yeah, that makes sense. I was just trying to figure out the dynamics of how this actually works.
We kind of did that with CPA, too. I just, Jeff made up a letter that works for him, and we signed it there. Is there anything else on this, gentlemen, anybody or ladies?
Any objection for us making the motion? Okay, not seeing any, Counselor Rist.
I move that the City Council support the open space recreation plan as submitted by the Planning Department and authorize the President to sign a letter of support for the full council.
Second.
Motion second to approve a letter of support from the council for the open space plan. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye. Motion passes.
Just to clarify, do you want me to just use the draft letter that's in there, or, Peg, are you writing something else?
There was a different, I think there was a different one that Jeff and I had discussed, so...
The letter in there is a CPA letter, I believe.
CPA letter. Yes. Jeff will provide it, and we'll send it over to you, Barbara.
Okay.
Okay, then we have another support of the Granby joining the South Hadley and East Hampton Veterans District. So that is actually going to be moved to finance, I believe. We're going to move that to finance, as it turns out, so...
Mayor has something to say.
I know, I was finishing my sentence. Mayor, go ahead.
Hi, so what's before you, actually, a request to be paused on the, the agenda. What the request should have been is that the, I need to ask, I need to come back and ask for your permission to negotiate an inter-municipal agreement, because it's an agreement to be negotiated between three other municipalities to provide veterans services, and Granby, which was in our district and went, left the district to do their own singular district, now requests to come back in. So the, our Veterans District Board, which is, you know, it's kind of a, it's a board very specific to the state and federal Veterans Administration and required, has put forward a recommendation to do so, to bring Granby back in to better serve veterans, and the, the error was that South Hadley, as a town government, has a select board, and the select board would give the town administrator there permission to negotiate, and it was, it was just a quick, we're a city, and you have me as mayor, so I need to negotiate that, similar to the weights and measure and animal control, so I apologize for the confusion.
So...
No worries, so we'll, we'll expect that in the, in a future packet. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
So we're pulling this? I'm misunderstanding.
Yes, we are pulling this.
Well, actually, we're, I'm requesting for it to be pulled, and next meeting, I will ask for permission to negotiate.
And then we'll...
And then, and get that okay, and then, once the, the document is negotiated and the state is okay with it, because they have to approve it, I will make sure it makes it into the City Council packet.
Okay.
Madam President, I don't think we have to take any action. Just don't take any action on the, the subject, and you'd better come back to us, as the mayor requested.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Apologies.
Yep. Any other comments from any other councilors? Let me finish my sentence, and then I will call on you. For any other councilors who would like to speak on any other topic, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. I think it's important to update the meals and the internet from the school department after having that invitation to the superintendent. First, I want to say thanks to the mayor for providing the transportation to deliver the, the meals for the families and the kids in our community. We are feeding at least around average, almost 40 to 50 kids on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. I think it's really important for, for the community to know that we're still doing that. The, the meals at the high school is between 10 to 12, and it is, is, is working really good. I have to, to tell to the councilors, the Lindsey and I, we have a meeting with the superintendent, and we suggest her to, with the, with the councilors at the school and the staff at the school, to call the, the kids there. Last year was eligible to have free and reduced meals, and they did, and they'll find, a lot of families that find out now that it's meal provided by the school, and, but at least now they're finding that, that they have it, and they're going to get those meals soon in their, in their house. The internet, I think the school is working on it. I don't have any details about that, but I know the superintendent and the principals are working to find out how they can keep working and, and make the internet better for the kids. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Rist?
Just a thank you to the mayor for announcing East Hampton's rent relief program. As the chairman of the CPA, this has taken a while since last spring to get this into activity. A lot of it had to do with finding a local agency that would administer it, and that's been done and is now up and running. And I just wanted to ask Jeff Bag, just so we could announce it tonight, how is that application process? Is it on the website for the rent relief program? I'm asking you only because it's CPA-related. If you don't know, maybe the mayor knows.
Yeah, I mean, I think the mayor was going to say something, too. I mean, the, the framework for it is that it's really not an online application for people. They're really going to be encouraged to call Community Action, and so...
It's Community Action, I wasn't sure.
Yep, and I'll, I'll, you'll let the mayor speak. I mean, I think we're just going to try to encourage people to call Community Action. They're having the resources to talk to people and help them understand whether they're going to qualify or not, so it's really not an online application form at this point.
Can we have something on the website, Mayor, that says, go to Community Action?
I have a report on the program with exact detail of how to access it and how we'll be marketing it during mayor communication.
Oh, I'm sorry, I stole your thunder.
You did, but thank you, sir, for bringing it up. It can't be mentioned enough, and I have...
No, I was, I was very proud of our CPA, that's why I wanted to say.
You should be. No, absolutely.
Madam President?
Any other counselor?
Sorry.
Any other, we have to start the public hearing, so are there any other councilors? And, okay, Counselor Zaret, hopefully you could brief?
Yeah, I'll be quick, because I know we have to start the public hearing. Just a couple of things quickly, just a thanks to everybody with the collaboration with delivering the food and our community members for bringing forward some of the gaps in the issue. February is Black History Month. It's an opportunity to reflect on the history and the contributions of Black Americans, and also reflect on some of the troublesome history of Black Americans in our country and our ongoing state of racial inequity. We saw a lot of highs with the success of Stacey Abrams and her organization Fair Fight, as well as Black Voters Matter, and the success that we saw in Georgia with Raphael Warnock. Unfortunately, we also lost John Lewis this year, and at the same time, there, we have a long road to travel, as we saw and witnessed the murders of, of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor. So there's a lot of work to be done in the country despite much success. I just wanted to put that out there, and I'll be posting articles throughout the month. While we are in the midst of a pandemic, don't forget about Winterfest. You can go to NashwanaCon.org. There'll be some, there's ongoing online events, but there'll also be some events on February 13th. And also, just quickly, in support of science, I received my second of two Moderna vaccines. I feel fine. I have a little sore, soreness in my shoulder. I received it yesterday. You know, hopefully, we'll all be receiving these soon, and we'll be able to enjoy each other's company in person, so just keep you wearing your masks and social distancing, and looking forward to seeing you not on Zoom soon enough. So thank you, President.
Thank you, Counselor Zaret. I will take a motion to open the public hearings.
So moved.
Flood had her hand up there.
Oh, Erica, is there any chance you could, okay, go ahead.
Very, very brief, I promise. I just want to congratulate the East Hampton High School's We the People State Champions. I believe that's four years in a row, if we're counting, and I very much look forward to the day when some of these students are running for local office. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you. Very good point, thank you.
I move that the public hearings be opened.
Second.
Motion second to open the public hearings. Any discussion? Barbara.
JP Kozinski. Okay, Erica Flood.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. Supplemental appropriations, Counselor Rist?
Yes, the Finance Committee met and approved the first supplemental appropriation, three to zero. It's a $34,676 appropriation to pay for a insurance deduction holiday. The councilors may remember that we approved paying for a premium holiday that was negotiated between the collective bargaining units and the insurance groups representing them. They get a premium holiday for the first year, but they weren't entitled to a new and premium holiday unless the premiums for the healthcare were under 2%. And I'll read from the mayor's language that she provided for us. "The intent in the language in the agreement was to give a premium holiday in fiscal year 2021, so long as there wasn't a major increase in the premiums, because the city saved a large amount of money in the insurance agreement. As the rates did not increase, in FY '21, the premium holiday was given on 9/24/20, and the retired teachers received it on 11/12/20 to fulfill the union agreement. The language prevented the city from having to give the premium holiday if the rates went up more than 2%, but the rates, thank God, did not go up more than 2%. So they are entitled to this premium holiday, and this is how the mayor is going to fund it for this year. We're kind of obligated to do this, because of the union agreement."
Are there any questions or comments from the councilors? Counselor Kozinski?
Just to clarify, I believe in the discussions where the measure was originally approved, there had been discussion about there being a change in, 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 in the benefits that we were offering, and that's why the union and the city got together to discuss those changes, and this was a negotiated change, and that's why we're bound to the, to the new, to the new agreement, because it was a kind of like an amendment to the original, our original agreement. So we're just fulfilling that amendment, because it served both purposes. It included the premium holiday in exchange for increased premium, I mean, increased plan costs, like going to the ER, I think jumped from like $35 to $100 per visit. I think there were other plan increases. So I just wanted to make it clear, this wasn't like a giveaway to employee, to employees. This was a negotiation in exchange for plan changes.
The counselor is correct.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Is there anyone, was that your hand, Counselor Zaret? Or did you just? Anyone from the public have anything, any questions, any comments?
I see no hands, Madam President.
All right. Nothing, okay, go ahead, Counselor Rist.
I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $34,676, to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to the F fiscal year 2132B health insurance holiday. The amount is $34,676 for the following purpose, to provide funds for one week insurance deduction holiday in fiscal year 2021 per union agreement.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the, the supplemental appropriation for the insurance deduction holiday. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Erica Flood.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
Madam President, could you make Barbara a co-host so she can show her pictures? This particular appropriation is about hiring a records company to help us reorganize, re-box, index, and review records for microfilming and destruction based on city records survey, which was completed. The CPA approved this, I mean, sorry, funded the initial outlay for the first phase, which is to find where we are with all the records. And I'll turn it over to Barbara, and I believe the person from the, Chris is here, right? Chris, you're from the company. And Barbara has some pictures to show you about these records. It's well done. Eventually, hopefully, we'll have it digitized, so all of our agencies can easily access old records when they need to. Go ahead, Barbara. You have pictures to show everybody and explain this.
Yeah, they're real quick. I just, I just thought I would show everybody what things look like at this point in time. Probably, a lot of you have never been into the basement of the town hall, so I thought, you know, it might be worthwhile just, just giving you a little before, before look. Hopefully, I can figure this. Let's see. Oh. Okay. Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay, yay. Okay, like I said, I'm going to go through it real quick, because, you know, just because. So, anyway, this is, this is the largest room in the basement here at 50 Payson Avenue. All these things along the side obviously shouldn't be here. The room has a large amount of, also a large amount of filing cabinets. All those filing cabinets will be removed, and the records will be boxed. There'll be new shelving that will be brought in, and all the boxes will be the same. They'll be labeled, they'll be indexed, categorized. The things that can be, you know, are ready for destruction will be notified of, and we'll get assistance with that. So this is in that same room. It's downstairs, a large room in the basement, 50 Payson. This is that same room. So all these filing cabinets have a lot of old school records that were just brought over from the building on Main Street when we moved into 50 Payson Avenue in 2003. So they're all going to be gone, which will free up a lot of space for, for more record storage. There's also a small, oh no, this is the same, the same building. We have done some boxing and shelving, but as you can see, some of the boxes are too big, they don't fit when we're running out of room. So there's also a smaller room, which is right next to it, and that is packed to the gills also. A lot of these are ballots that I have to keep, but we need a place to put them. All these notebooks, most of them are payroll records from the school department, and most of them are already scanned, so we need some help deciding whether these can all be gotten rid of, or whether they have to be kept. Okay, so now we're over at the back of the town hall, and this is right now how we get into the basement of the town hall. This is right inside the door, walking towards the basement, and this door, the white door with the brown trim, that's how we get into the basement storage. And these are the stairs, so, so it's lovely. When you get down to the bottom, this is what the town hall basement looks like. The door, we're on the, on the right here, this is the only vault that we have in town. Cities and towns are supposed to have vaults for all of their records. Cities and towns are supposed to have vaults for all of their records, but this is the only one that we have. It is not adequate. This is the door. And this is inside the vault in the, in the basement of the town hall. As you can see, there's pipes at the back of the room. Who knows what they have in them? I'm not sure. But this, this is what you look at when you first go in the door. There's also a grate that opens right directly to the outside, which lets in outside air, which makes the room really moist, a lot of mildew and moldy smell. Definitely not good for records. This is one of the books that is in one of the boxes. I found it kind of interesting. This, this book is from like the 1930s and there's a book of women voters and a book of men voters. I thought that was interesting.
Little history.
Yeah. These are some other old books. Most of them are treasurer's warrants and I have to say, I don't know if they have to be kept or if they don't. That's what we need the help for. This is the condition of them, which isn't very good. This is also in the vault of the Old Town Hall. And another picture of the, the back of the foundation and the pipe also in the vault. These are mostly all treasurer's warrant books and more. There's, there's a lot of them. We go down the hall and then there's a very large room that is, this is it. This is what it looks like. This room will probably be where we move most everything. All these shelves will be taken out and we'll be putting new shelves and the company will help us figure out what we need to do with all this because I certainly do not know. This is that same room. Some more pictures from things in that room. The same room. The same room, sorry. This is that same room too. So, and then, then there's a couple other smaller rooms in the basement of a lot of boxed up records that I don't know if we have to keep them or not. They're not super old, but, you know, I don't know if we have to keep them or not. Another room. This, this room has no light. This was my cell phone flash. It was the only way I could see anything. And this is the same room. So that, that kind of gives you an idea of what, 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 what we're dealing with as far as the records. And they did come in and we surveyed the woman from King Information. She went into every, every room there and she wrote down everything that she could find and it was, yeah, there's a lot. So now we're on to the next step of dealing with this.
Just for the councilors' information, a reminder, this particular appropriation is dealing with everything that's at 50 Payson.
Right, right.
The stuff at Old Town Hall will be paid for with the CPA grant for historic records and that's in process, which will be coming to the city council in a, in a month probably. But all we're dealing with now is what's in 50 Payson and Barb, Chris, do you want to, Chris is a, I don't know, Chartran? I hope I didn't mispronounce your name.
He's very good.
He's here from the company, can explain the details. He was unable to make the finance committee meeting of what you're going to do. And I'd like to know when, what phase will eventually be digitized if we are doing that part. But you could explain this to the councilors, please.
Sure. Barb, you, you sounded like you wanted to add something before I start. Did you want to add something to what Counselor Rist was saying?
Right. I did want to say that the first phase is a full $65,000 and like Dan said, we are splitting at 50. And that, Chris had told me he felt could pretty much take care of 50 Payson Avenue and I will be going to CPA for the rest.
So, yeah, the, the phase that we talked about a moment ago with the evaluation step was really learning, you know, both the spaces and the records that are within all of those spaces. Are they being carefully enough controlled and managed? And Barb, that was an excellent visual so that you now have really a sense of, you know, what's going on specifically in Old Town Hall and, and 50 Payson. And I guess the first thing I would like to say is this is not anything we haven't seen before. We specialize in understanding what records have value on all the different scales, which is regulatory, operational, historic, and really then with the spaces at your disposal, what is the best way to control those records, both getting rid of the things that you don't need to maintain any longer and carefully and properly label and identify and locate all of the things that you then must maintain and, and for all of their terms. There are records you will have to have forever. And, and as Barb mentioned, that vault in the Old Town Hall being the only vault and in many ways doesn't really act like a vault anymore because of pipes running through walls and, and open spaces. We've got to be careful not to expect that room to do more like a, like a vault than, than actually it can. But with the spaces at, at your disposal, storing and properly organizing those records that you must maintain for internal purposes, anything that you need to do in researching what was done 20 years ago, 40 years ago, 100 years ago, based on the records that you're keeping, but not have it, you know, be that you, you've literally kept every document, including ones that you don't need, and now you have to wade through all of those miscellaneous documents to, to satisfy whatever the, the research is about. So we're going to work in, in these spaces to organize them properly, provide a, a tracking software mechanism that allows you to know exactly what is in, in every, on every shelf in, in every one of those rooms, as well as work very closely with you on identifying the things that you don't need to keep any longer. As, as Barb mentioned, there are some records that have already had some impact as to alternate media. And, and we then take into account if items are scanned, then perhaps that puts them in a category of you don't need to keep the hard copy anymore. However, every record, and there are some that you can scan, but you still must maintain in their original form. So it's, it's knowing virtually all of the requirements on every record that give us the special training that we have and bringing it in, applying it, giving you the tool then to operate it, but continuing to maintain a level of support, you know, at whatever level you like. And, and Dan, specifically to your question, the, the scanning and indexing phase probably is, let's, let's call this step a phase two, probably a phase three or phase four step because what this step is about is identifying the records that will do you well to move to a digital version and, and really organizing them so that you have no gaps, no excesses that are going down that path and you're, and you're spending more money doing the scanning than you will ever pull out, you know, as a, as a function of putting records in that media.
So if I understand it correctly, there will be a database index so that the planning department can find an old special permit from 20 years ago in such and such box in such and such room, but they can locate it quickly because there's a database that will show them where it is.
That's exactly right.
They still have to manually go down, open the box.
Right.
But in the box, it'll be indexed such that it'll be easy to find. Am I correct?
Correct.
That's on.
And, and that's ongoing. That becomes then a tool where the new records, as they're created, will be, will support with you, getting the new things in as, as the years march on, you know, so too other records will be ready to, to be cycled out and, and properly destroyed. The software tracks what you, what you will put in that destruction category so that you know at any given moment what has been destroyed. Saves a lot of time in, in obviously searching for things that have already been, you know, taken down that, that direction. So it, it's really now putting into action the findings that, as with so many communities, it's hard sometimes to know every rule on every record. So the, the common practice is to just keep it. And, and over the generations, that then becomes, you know, exactly the pictorial that Barbara showed you. And again, it, it is nothing we haven't seen before.
Thank you. In regards to the disposition of some of the more historical materials, could I just put in a plug and an inquiry as an ongoing volunteer for the East Hampton Historical Society? We do very much have an interest in analog materials. And so once the disposition has been determined, if things were to be destroyed, I would love to have the opportunity to just have a peek and see if there's some of those analog materials that we could archive and store onsite at the Historical Society. So perhaps I can be in touch with Chris and Barbara on that.
Absolutely. I will say, we do not make the decision to destroy any of the records. We make a recommendation and working with the clerk's office, there is actually a form that needs to be submitted to the Secretary of State before anything's destroyed. So there are, you know, some steps and, and at no point, you know, can you just on your own authority, remove things and destroy them. But one of those evaluation lenses is historical. So we know as, as anything like that comes into focus, we're going to put it in front of the appropriate department so that they can take a, have the ability to say that would be something that we'd like to preserve.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else have any questions? Anyone from, I'm sorry?
Can I just add one more thing?
Sure.
So I just want to mention that while, while we're focusing on 50 Payson and Town Hall tonight, there are at least two other departments that you may be seeing me again. We've got the, the survey that I sent to you at the very back, it also talks about the public safety complex and the council on aging. So the mayor and I, we, we decided that the most important one right now was to focus on 50 Payson in the town hall because they're, they're kind of, the records are kind of connected and they've got the most. But this isn't, this isn't everything, but it's really the, the major bulk. So I just wanted to put that out there so you won't be surprised if I come back.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara. Any, Mayor?
Just quickly, so I want to appreciate Barbara's work just to get the first step going with King Information. There was still a lot of organizing to get ready for the survey and Chris and his team were really helpful. And to Counselor Flood's comment, I, you know, when we're doing this historical property survey, I think this is in the same line where it's a historical document survey, right? And, and to see what's out there and what we have, what can be saved and needs to be preserved. So thank you for bringing that up. But also, if, if nothing else during COVID, having access to files digitally, remotely, portals for the public, this is a huge first step and rolls into a couple of other communication projects that we're pursuing now for, for the city. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone for Counselor Kozinski?
Barb, I thank you so much for the pictures. I think we all enjoyed getting to take a look at the basement over at the various locations. I think it depicts the need very clearly and I thank you for working on the project and for the CPA for participating. While we have Mr. Chartran here, I just wanted to try to clarify, since you've been down the road before in basements with other communities, maybe you could help us understand. You said the regulatory, operational and historic requirements. Is there, I would imagine that there would be an administrative role for the department where the records were, that they belong, they were generated by that department. I, I would imagine that, that the mayor's office might want to participate in how records are either made, either continued or disposed of in some way. And there may be certain requirements which we'll read about. So I was wondering where the report would be going? Would it be coming back to the council for its legislative input on historic records, for example? How do you see the process from here? You write the report, you give it to Barb, go to the departments, come back to us?
Well, very specifically, and I'm sure Barb will comment on this as well, but the, the software allows that every department will have an ownership level to the records that are there. And while you are correct in that, there clearly is not a dedicated space for each department. There, there has been some kind of collectiveness created within the, the couple of, of locations at 50 Payson, although there were several small spaces. What Barb illustrated in her pictures are the two, you know, kind of basement or, or largest gathering locations. They tend to be, I guess, let me, let me say it this way, there tends to be a waterfall effect and the offices maintain some records for a little while, then they determine they need some space, so they, they kick them out to the first layer and, and eventually things all make it down to those basement locations, whether the Old Town Hall or, or 50 Payson. And so as we set up the, the program that allows for the controls, each department has then the ability to have printouts or, or lists made of the records that they have. And at any time that you then go to the program to say what in the past year, we do recommend at least an annual kind of review, what in the past year has come up ready for destruction or ready to move down that road, giving you the chance to, to keep some that you may have an issue, you know, an ongoing project with at that moment. But any reason you wish to retain something that has then come up for destruction can be held back. But you can create printouts so that each department then is aware of what records have come up for that process and allow them to sign off on them. It, it can be a process that then those reports are, are created by the, the contact or, you know, the manager, the local manager of the program. Often it's the clerk, but doesn't have to be. And at that point, they can certainly come before you if that's a part of how internally you identify your process. There, as, as I mentioned, there is a, a form that must be completed that identifies all the records that any municipality intends to destroy. Secretary of State's office has to approve that. So there's a bit of a cycle there as well, just to check and balance that, you know, records aren't randomly being selected and, and sent down the shred path. But those, the, the program would allow for any department to have their records in specific be identified and that could coincide very clearly with any, any destruction or, or any new records going in either end of that spectrum. Did I answer that question?
You're on mute.
Or a gift to, for example, the Historical Society or to another group or to somebody else for something that may, or, or perhaps auctioning the, the records. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure. If they're going to be destroyed and they're not confidential in any way, maybe there's a legislative role and a mayoral role in what happens to the public records. I wasn't sure.
Right.
So thank you very much for, for commenting.
Sure.
Any other city councilors with any questions? Anyone from the public with any questions? Do you see any hands raised, Counselor Rist?
Counselor Zaret.
Oh, Counselor Zaret? You're on mute. Time's up. No, I'm kidding.
Can I have another 30 seconds, President?
Go ahead. I'm kidding.
It's not a question, mostly just a statement of gratitude. I think Mr. Chartran had covered their services. Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and the clerk. We were live, having live meetings, but I had inquired about these issues probably a couple times during the oral communications after seeing the state of Old Town Hall. So I'm thankful that
So I'm thankful that this archival plan is moving forward. So thank you very much. I think it's important to preserve our records and our history.
Right. Seeing no other hands. Do you want to continue, Counselor Rist?
Then I'll make a motion to approve, that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $50,000 to be transferred from the Cannabis Impact Fee Stabilization Account. $50,000 to be transferred to Clerk Records Management Phase Two Fiscal Year 21. $50,000 for the following purpose. To begin Phase Two of the City's Records Management Project. The portion of the project would involve records worked at Fifty Payson Avenue and the Old Town Hall. The funding would hire an archived record company to re-box index and review records for microfilming and destruction based on our City's Record Survey completed in November 2020. It would also include the purchase of shelving and boxes and the development of a record database.
Second.
Motion and a second for supplemental appropriation of $50,000 for Phase Two of the City's Record Management Project. Any further discussion? Barbara.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Ted Coniff.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Aye. Motion passes. I think that's all you had, correct, Counselor Rist?
Yes, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have zoning ordinance amendment. Counselor Derby is out, and I understand Counselor Zarek will be providing this update.
Thank you, President Coniff. This is a proposal that I believe was submitted back in, I think, October. The background to this is both members of the industry, as well as, I think, the planner approached us. This is somewhat a matter of equity and being on equal footing in regards to the local and regional cannabis industry. Other cities, North Hampton in particular, their cannabis retail opens at 8:00 AM. And there was a simple request for the ordinance committee to consider changing, amending Section 10.10.5.4, which is our hours of operation, which currently only allow retailers to open at 10:00 AM or later, to open at 8:00 AM. This was reviewed and deliberated in the ordinance committee and was recommended unanimously. And there was also a positive recommendation from the planning board. So the language, I'm not making a motion, but just to know that we'd be amending Section 10.10.5.4 to allow cannabis retailers to be open to the public no earlier than 8:00 AM and no later than 11:00 PM. That would be the language when the motion, if the motion is made.
Okay. Is there anyone, any city councilors who have any questions of this? Counselor Kuzinski?
Just the current hours of operation as they currently stand under the ordinance?
10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
To 11:00 PM. So it's just the morning change that's being requested. Thank you.
So as I recall, and I can't recall a lot, but what I recall when we were originally doing the cannabis ordinance, the reason I thought that we were opening at 10:00 was to avoid kids going to school. And so that the shops would not necessarily be open when kids would be walking to school or whatever. I believe that was the original intent of opening a little bit later. I think we always knew we could open earlier, but we didn't. So I just want to throw it out there. It's not really necessarily a reflection of where I'm going with this. But is, has something, other than, is the impetus behind this to maintain competition? And, or was there a discussion around, you know, trying to balance that, that schools open, kids walking by with competition? Was there a discussion around that?
I'll comment now, if I may, President Coniff. I'd like to have Counselor Peak also comment. I think, as you all know, there were a lot of community concerns around cannabis retail when we were first writing the ordinance. And there were a lot of unknowns. And I think to some degree, we legislate for unknowns. One of the big ones was traffic. I think we imagined a significantly more traffic, certainly to inside. And subsequently, when the business opened on Cottage Street, we were imagining lines around the block. And so we weren't, we're not seeing that. And I think that was a concern as well. And you were correct, in some of the, in some of the locations where there was a proximity to schools, but obviously outside of the buffers we had established. I think there were some worries about community impact and youth impact. And I think there was also, you know, some concerns about open use. And I don't think that any of that really came to be. And so this is just, in my opinion, that was certainly my level of comfort and why I supported this. And I think that, well, right now, kids aren't walking to school anyhow. But I think that some of those issues were made clear that they were not, would not be as impactful as we thought. And so I believe that's why the committee was comfortable recommending this. But I would be interested in Counselor Peak's take as well.
Counselor Peak?
You covered most of the things that I would say. I think it is worth mentioning that out of the institutions that we currently have, the cannabis retailers that we currently have, only one of them is in a location where anyone is going to be walking to school. Like, I mean, they're not, I don't think many people are walking behind the mills to go to school, for example, or walking along Route 10 to go to school. So there's really just kind of the one that's right there. And I think, you know, again, there was this sense that initially, there was going to be this flood of interest, leading to long lines and chaotic queues and situations where people might be waiting, you know, kids might be waiting through these things. I think that that was an understandable thing for us to worry about, given that at the time, we were looking at what was going on with Neta in North Hampton being the sole Western Mass retailer and having, oh, I should say, the sole, like, legal retailer, like, on the east coast, west of Worcester at that point. So there were people coming in from, like, not even New England. That has not really been what we've seen. And so for me, like, I just really struggle to see the scenario where kids are going to walk by these places and have some sort of, I mean, especially also now seeing how they're laid out and seeing sort of like what actually walking by them is like. It's really difficult for me to actually figure out why there's something so damaging about it that it warrants, like, restricting a business from operating in hours that they would like to operate in. Although I'm very open to there's something that I've missed. It's also worth noting that we are currently underway in constructing a new school, which has a lot of benefits. And perhaps unfortunately, one, you know, one of the few downsides is less kids walking to school and certainly less kids walking along Cottage Street to go to school. So the whole, it just seemed like, like, I understand why we were really concerned about this when we were, given how many unknowns there were. But having seen what this industry has grown into, it just seemed like a stretch to suggest that there's some sort of public safety interest in limiting the hours of operation.
Okay. Thank you, both. Any other councilors have any questions? Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any question, but I have a comment. I'm going to vote yes, just because after almost two years with the cannabis, I think the security is really good. Every time you walk in front of any store, you barely know. You have to know that it's marijuana. If you don't know it is a marijuana shop, you don't know it's an IMSA that you can smell outside. But except that one, you barely can tell any other store. The concern about the students, yes, I get it. But in the afternoon, they get out of the school and they can walk through the M2. So I don't, that, I didn't buy that there is going to be any trouble in the morning. That's the reason I'm going to vote yes. I think the process, what these stores are doing is amazing. The security, the doors, the precautions, I think is amazing. And two hours doesn't make any big difference to say yes. So I'm going to vote yes for it.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Rothschild?
Just something quick. I just wanted to jump on that. I just want to give kudos to the establishments that are currently here in East Hampton because I find that they are running really professional establishments. And like we've all mentioned, there's not lines or it's not chaotic. And I feel like the security measures are really put in place. So I just, I'm happy with the establishments that are in East Hampton and the way they're conducting businesses.
I agree, I agree, actually. And I also, I think back when we were doing this, there was this whole notion of, there would be neon lights that said, weed store, weed store. And it was kind of, it was kind of enjoyable to watch the noise on Facebook with, what's liberty? What's liberty? I don't know what liberty is because you couldn't tell from the outside what that place was. So I think, I think all of those, because we didn't know what we didn't know. And all of those things, I think, never really materialized. And I agree. I think, I think they're doing a great job in town here and very professional, very secure. Any other councilors who have anything to say? Anyone? Counselor Kuzinski?
I just wanted to add that I think that in the initial rollout, it seemed appropriate. And that's why we had established the standards that we did. And now, after, as Counselor Rothschild has said, the well-run operations here in the city. And I think our understanding, if this can be helpful to the business climate for the folks who are running the businesses, not the least of which to say to the city revenues, if revenues go up, that it may be a very well be time to change, especially since the Maple Street School will soon be closing. So I am inclined to vote in favor of this measure. But I'm looking forward to hearing from the public. And I would also like to ask Counselor Zarek and anyone else on the committee if there was any particularly strenuous objections on behalf of anyone.
Counselor Zarek?
I was not able to attend the joint public hearing with the planning board. There was one planning board member who voted no. From my, Counselor Peak, I think he had just had internet problems, so he's not on. But no, there weren't. I mean, not, no significant concerns at all, certainly not at our ordinance meetings.
Okay. Jeff Bag, did you have anything to add?
I guess I would just put a finer point on what Counselor Zarek just said. There is a, there is a report from the planning board regarding the joint public hearing that was on December 15th. And there was, there was one planning board member who voted against it and expressed concern about the necessity. Just understanding if enough people were aware that this discussion was happening. But overall, I think the consensus was that the changes to the early morning hours are, it's kind of, it's kind of seeing this mature. You know, in a couple of years, it's matured pretty well to see that opening at 8:00 AM would have no impacts. No, no, there was no sense of, you know, impacts coming from this. In the report, I will just add this, just in case it comes up in the future, is that there was, there was a flip side to this, which is if we were talking about going 11:00 PM and later and making this 24 hours kind of thing, that would be different, that would, that would warrant a lot more discussion and, you know, debate about what that might mean. But the going from 10:00 to 8:00, you know, no one else had significant concerns about it.
Okay. Counselor Rist?
For me, this is about business fairness. We have invited this business to our community by vote of the voters. And if we're going to have businesses in our community, they need to be able to fairly compete with other communities. So that's, I believe that's one of the major reasons. I lost my train of thought, but I had something else. If I think of it, I'll come back to you.
Okay. Any other councilors, last call before we go to the public. Counselor Zarek?
Just, you know, just from the view from 20,000 feet, you know, it's been really exciting. To your point, Counselor Coniff, you know, we worked on this together when you were a member of the ordinance committee. And, you know, I think that East Hampton has really shown an interesting approach to the legal cannabis industry. We prudently rolled out ordinance that was responsible at the time. And we're taking opportunities to reevaluate it as we go along, as this industry buds and grows. And I think that, you know, this is just a proud moment, once again, to show East Hampton leading in terms of, you know, we were, we were early in with a responsible ordinance. We're making changes. As you know, we have other items on the agenda that address this. So I'm just really proud to have been a part of this, working with the planner and the rest of you. And, you know, looking forward to continuing to be luminaries in the state and potentially in the country to show how to do sensible cannabis legislation.
Thank you, Counselor Zarek. Counselor Rist?
Yes, I remembered. I wanted to point out that this is about retail cannabis, the sale of retail products. It is not about onsite consumption. It's not equivalent to a bar where people, where there is control of when bars can open and close. This is about retail. And that's important to make, there's a difference. When we get around to cannabis cafes, that's a whole different subject. But that's not what this is. This is retail and making it fair for businesses throughout the community. Retail stores should have the same, fair competition. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone from the public? A minute.
Myra, Myra has her hand up.
Okay. Myra?
Hello, councilors. I just had a few, like, one thought in buds and grows. You couldn't have picked a better, a better term. I just wanted to say, I think the council has normalized this industry and the fact that a lot of, it seems like a lot of their revenue comes from cannabis funds. My only question that I was, that I'm concerned about as a resident in terms of advertisement, I'm wondering where cannabis, local cannabis stores get their advertising? Like, where they get their bulk mail? Consumers, like the names and list? Because I don't think it's appropriate that it be addressed to a 12-year-old boy.
Counselor Zarek?
I can answer that. And this, Myra brings up a good point. If I, if I'm, I believe there was an incident recently where one of our retailers had sent out a bulk mailer that went to minors. I actually reached out to the business directly. But the businesses are supposed to be contracting with bulk mailing companies that only release addresses of people 21 and over. I'm not sure what happened with that specific incident, but I do know that the owners were swift to, to address it. I'm not sure specifically where they source them, but they do source lists that are specifically for people 21 and over. Because despite the fact, I do agree, the word normalizing, you know, we do still need to be very mindful about, as this industry continues to roll out, properly educating our youth around the dangers of underage cannabis consumption.
Okay.
Natalie has her hand up.
Natalie, go ahead.
Hello, everyone, again. So what I do want to say is, yes, bringing this up to the children, because they're children, about weed consumption is a great idea. However, this has been going on for a while. It's actually been decriminalized federally. This is a reef of madness, guys. Like, let them open at 8:00 AM versus 10:00. At this point, I wish we would ask more questions like, where are you putting this money into the community? So that way, maybe we could fund certain things. So that way, maybe we could fund certain things for children to learn about the cannabis industry in a different light. But that's just my opinion.
Okay. Thank you, Natalie.
I see no other hands up, Madam President.
All right. Counselor Zarek, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, let me just pull up the language quickly so it's reflected appropriately. I'd like to make a motion to amend Section 10.10.5.4 of adult-use cannabis establishments in our ordinance to read as follows. And I'm just scrolling down. Hours cannabis retailers shall be open to the public no earlier than 8:00 AM and no later than 11:00 PM. Just of note, the amendment being made to change 10:00 AM to 8:00 AM.
Second.
Motion and a second to change the hours of operation for cannabis retailers to open no late, no earlier than 8:00 AM from the original 10:00 AM. Any discussion? Barbara?
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret? I saw his hand.
Yeah, I think.
Yes.
Give the yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes. And I will now take a motion to close the public hearings.
So move.
Motion second to close the public hearings. Any discussion? Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
All right. Public hearings are now closed. Thank you, everyone. Moving on with our agenda, I believe we are now at Mayor Communications. Mayor LaChapelle, if you're still with us?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, so I would like to just quickly thank the community-driven outreach to our students and also the tremendous efforts to our elders throughout the community. I think that there are some really good leads to follow up in various departments. It's been really eye-opening and I I think that much, you know, needs to be attributed to the grassroots. And I think family, students, and our elders are the better for it. Also, I would like to just talk a little bit about and briefly about our rental, our emergency rental assistance program. I concur with Counselor Rist that CPA, this is just a fabulous, fabulous use of CPA money in general. And during the pandemic, this program is a great bridge. And we are also catching up with folks who have fallen through other programs. That said, the rental emergency assistance program is run by Pioneer, Community Action Pioneer Valley. And you, they will issue grants up to $3,000 for back rent or current rent or rent that is coming up. The most important thing to remember about this announcement and what you will see in marketing materials, as well as the press release, is the number 413-475-1570. And that's how you apply. There is an anticipation at first, like, there'll be a lot of calls, leave a message. And the hours to call are 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, with they're on lunch break from noon to 1:00 PM. So if you get the voicemail, leave a message. They're going to be monitoring that and they will get back to you. The other important thing, second to the phone number, is also to take a good look at the income level. So it's up to 100% of the area median income level. And there are other programs where the income was was lower. And again, there was a big gap. The folks who never imagined themselves in a place to not be able to make ends meet because of COVID or just the unsurety of if they have a job or what will happen with benefits. So the household size and their income limit for one person, income limit is $59,800. And just as as just another example, four-person household, the income limit is $85,400. So I think that the breadth of the income limit and and that they go to 100% is meaningful. I also say, I also find this to be dark because folks who never expected to find themselves in the place and folks who now have relief that have needed relief for quite a while are in the same bucket of funds. So I welcome this CPA contribution. I would ask the CPA to watch how this program rolls out for East Hampton and consider refunding as needed because it will be a little bit before we get more federal funds to address this. And this process for rental assistance is relatively easier compared to the existing state programs like the RAF program. My last comment would be that landlords who have been giving breaks or forbearing on rent with tenants are encouraged to also call 413-7, I'm sorry, 413-475-1570 to learn about the program and work with their tenants. Let's make sure everybody who would like to make themselves available to this money can and know about it. We will have a marketing campaign that will be both in English and Spanish that will kick off shortly. The other thanks I'd like to to give is our assistant planner, Jamie Webb, who really pulled this together and got all of the ducks in row in a pretty technical program. The request, this was to find somebody to distribute this money. I just make it very clear, because of the amount, it fell under 30B, our procurement law for the state, and we had to put a request for proposals. The first one, we did not get any response because all of the agencies that could oversee this program were were over capacity administering other communities' programs. The second RFP, we were successful. We had a few, I think, three agencies apply. And we went with Community Action Pioneer Valley, which has great experience doing this. Another great technical partner was our own Affordable Housing Partnership Board in the city at all, so as well. So I'll just, I'll say please for rent relief up to $3,000. That includes back rent, current rent, and what you anticipate your budget to be going forward. The number is 413-475-1570. And and for anybody at the meeting, and certainly the councilors, please, let's, let's get the, let's get the word out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Do do any councilors have any questions for the mayor? Counselor Rothschild?
Thanks to everyone who made this happen. I just had a question. I thought I read in the flyer that one of the things to be eligible is you already have to be behind a month's rent at least. Is that correct?
I would, that is certainly the target population. And for those technical details, I would call Community Action directly to walk through the application and what the criteria and what considered going, being in arrears is. So there are people who have used their first or last or security deposit as a rent payment. So technically, they are up to date, but they're not because they used their first, I'm sorry, not first, a last monthly payment or their security deposit. Others aren't considered, some people think they're not behind it rent because the landlord has said you can pay it later, will add it at the end of the lease, a residential lease. That would be considered being in arrears.
Okay. I will call and find out because one of my concerns is sometimes there's people who just borrow money from other people or they do everything they can to stay in good standing and then something like this comes out and then they are, then they're not able to have opportunity because they've been bending over backwards, getting funds from other places. So I'm just going to call and clarify that because I would hope that if someone has need, that they've been doing everything to not fall behind, that that should eliminate them from getting help.
So I am, I I would just thank you for calling. I think that detail is important. But I would also encourage people, regardless of what you get, Counselor Rothschild, that folks with any of those questions, and that's a great way, like borrowing money to make you rent, that is considered in rent arrears. So I I think that there are individual conversation, I mean, the overall, I think, is important. And but but I just, you know, we're finding with a lot of these COVID-19-related programs, I don't know how strict this one is, that there is flexibility because honestly, people aren't applying for some of this money, different pots of COVID-19 money because the requirements, one, it's just the time. And the requirements are really intimidating. And, you know, I I don't want to go too far off track, but we have another grant program for businesses, for small, micro and small businesses in East Hampton and six other communities. And of our smallest communities, that program is really overwhelming. The application is very overwhelming. So I've requested relief from some of the state regulations to reopen that money, that pot of money, and and say, okay, now it's easier. I mean, you know, a business, a sole proprietorship or, you know, a small business having to fill out all that paperwork. We knew the money was going to be difficult. That money was going to be difficult. We know that there are strings attached to this rental income that that we need to be very careful for, but but I'm asking for waivers. And I would love to know if folks in the community are finding it burdensome to access this money, but that the folks up at Community Action have done this program a lot. And it's and there, it's one of the reasons why we we chose them and rated their RFP so high because they have been so successful getting getting that that out. And they and they have programs in our city already, so they know us.
Any other councilors have any questions for the mayor? Counselor Kuzinski?
Just a quick comment, if I may, Mayor. And I am grateful to everyone who's worked in the rollout of this program, who participated in helping to make it come to fruition. I was thrilled to see the press release today and got right on it and notified people that I was aware of who could definitely use the help. I believe it's every counselor's intent that the money be used to help those whose income is not what it once was and who are in arrears. So kudos to everybody. Thanks very much. Let's see, get the get the money out there.
President Coniff, could I just add one thing off of the counselor's comment? I I would also, like, with this, this money is one, you know, I I put a soft plug, I'll put a little more direct plug into CPA monies and and have this board and CPA committee. This is a fund that doesn't have to be one time, that it can be refunded. I believe that it will need to be refunded. And I mean refunded as in putting more money into it, even when, you know, where it hurt immunity or whenever, whenever we say, oh, COVID is behind us, the actual pandemic, the effects and the ripples on on our families will be pretty, pretty tremendous. It's tremendous now. And and this is not, everybody gets a vaccination and and we're all out, you know, of of the burden, the economic burden. So I would just, again, currently call 413-475-1570. But also, let's put it out to the community, maybe, this is a fund that does not have to go away anytime. And and it's just sorry to hear that, that it is, it's so needed. And there's a case to to say for affordability of the city, it was needed even before this. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. All right. We will move on now to committee reports, starting with Finance. Counselor Rist?
Thank you, Madam President. We met on Monday and approved, the first thing we wanted to do is approve the council budget. I'm going to share the screen. This council budget was approved by the Finance Committee, 3 to 0. As you can see, there's an extra $250 here. That's because the council approved a new salary of $4,500, which begins January 1st, 2022. So the FY22 budget has to have 50% of that. That's for the six, first six months of 2022 for the council president at the time. We also reduced, the only line item we have left is city council advertising. So this figure here represents 2.5% less, which was requested by the mayor. And I want to remind everybody that as we go through the budget this year and next year, if we are running short on council advertising, Barbara will let us know and we will ask the mayor to help us with the supplemental, which is what is happening in other departments. So it's not a lot of money, but our advertising is is by statute necessary for ordinances and the like. So if anybody has any questions, Madam President, I can't see anybody. I have the share up.
I don't see anyone.
Counselors, I mean.
Yeah. Yes. I don't see any questions from the council.
So I'll move that the City Council approved the City Council budget request that will be submitted to the mayor in the amount of $41,927.50. Second.
Motion second to approve the requested budget of $41,927.50 for the City Council. Any further discussion? Owen Zaret?
Counselor Zarek had his hand up before we took the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Zarek?
That's okay. I mean, my only comment, I think, at some point, and I don't know how it's going to happen because it's, we have understandable budget cuts. I I know that the city councils made requests in the past to have a budget line item included for continuing education. And I I would say that I think this year, certainly, it's inappropriate because of many reasons, including budget cuts across the city. But the one ask I would make is maybe there's a creative way going forward to think about how to do this via some sort of appropriation process or a fund we can set aside. But I I just wanted to make sure I continued to advocate for a way that the councilors are able to get reimbursed for education that allows them to continue to participate in educated legislation for the city. Again, it's inappropriate right now, but I think we have to try to figure out some way to be able to make that happen.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Rist?
Oh, no, Barbara is taking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Barbara?
Okay. Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Okay. Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
And Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Madam President, the rest of the Finance Committee report. We are still dealing with the $10,000 request for the licensing clerk. I would like at this time, though, to make a motion that that be set for public hearing for the 17th, a meeting on the 17th at 6:15. Got the motion?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to.
I would like to withdraw the motion because the mayor has her hand up.
Okay.
I would like to remove, I would like to remove the request from the agenda and from City Council, City Council consideration. It's clearly that this request, while I clearly have a conflict with licensing and the. in the issuing of our licenses and the work of this board, the request for a stipend is contrary to the Collins Center report, which states that stipends should not be given for items that are within job descriptions and would not want to go against that, as well as what we were put forward to you in the pay plan that did not, that followed the Collins Center. So I would, I would ask for it to be withdrawn.
Madam Mayor, I'm a little surprised at this. My concern is that Lindsey would feel obligated to no longer work for the Licensing Bureau, which would be a huge loss. Are we okay on that line? Because we were prepared to vote on this at the next Finance meeting.
May I speak, Madam President?
Oh, absolutely, go ahead, Mayor.
I think that the public had a lot of input and concern, or had a lot of concern. And I certainly had a lot of concern that led to very expensive Collins Center report that looked at best practices across the state. And I feel like while, and we thought very hard on our job descriptions, while I think that the office under this mayor may look like a person needs a stipend, I would not want to set that precedent going forward. And in fact, I have redistributed stipends, and we've put it into a pay scale for many other employees in City Hall. And I've also tried to do the same thing in collaborative bargaining agreements for a couple of reasons. One is stipends aren't included in pensions and retirement. And I feel if the work contributes to the long-term stability of the city, that should be reflected in pensions, especially given where our pay scales are, which are low for neighboring communities that just have different finances that we do. And also, it stings a little bit. There's certainly been some hurt feelings in City Hall among non-unionized employees around favoritism, or what they feel they should get stipends or money for. And I want to, I would request, even though the Licensing Board is a different body, or I have a different relationship, that we don't start that precedent with the Licensing Board. I think we need to look a little more deeper in what Pay Plan was voted and approved by this body and the report that I put forward through the Collins Center.
Well, Madam President, I will change my motion to remove this without prejudice. But before I do that, I want to comment that I am actually feeling in favor of this, because I, as you know, the Finance Committee struggled with this. And I feel that having it in the job description or will provide the, whoever it is, will provide that person with a chance to earn the money necessary and have contributions for the retirement board and not be taxed as high as a stipend is taxed. All of those things weighed on me, so I welcome this, Madam Mayor. I think it's a, it's a good idea. So I am going to change my motion and make a motion to remove this item from our agenda without prejudice.
Second.
I need a second.
Motion and a second to remove the Licensing Board clerk stipend from the Finance Agenda without prejudice. Any further conversation? Barbara? Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Madam President, we will be meeting next week on the 10th to review two new items that are on our, excuse me, on our agenda tonight. And I will make a motion to send them to Finance Committee on first reading. The first reading is a supplemental appropriation for $10,000 to be transferred from the Cannabis Stabilization Fund, to be transferred to the library account of $10,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: resources and funding for the Emily Williston Memorial Library. Secondly, we have a supplemental appropriation requested of $132,000 to be transferred from the PEG Access Account, $132,000 to be transferred to the PEG Access Account, $132,000, to give approval to spend from PEG Access receipts reserved account for cable-related purposes consistent with the Finance Agreement. The motion to send those to Finance Committee.
Councilor Rist, just one correction, it is an interdepartmental transfer, not a supplemental.
Oh, I apologize, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Both of these two?
Finance Committee for review.
Grab a second?
I'm on it.
I didn't hear it, I apologize. Motion and second to move these two items to the Finance Committee. Any discussion? Barbara? Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I make a further motion that the last two mentioned items be set for public hearing for February 17th at 6:15. I need a second.
Second.
Motion second to set a public hearing for the Health Insurance Premium Holiday and the.
No, 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 no. For $10,000 and $132,000.
Oh, God, I'm sorry, we just said that. Wow, yes, the $10,000 and the $132,000 for public hearing on 17th. Any further discussion? Barbara? JP Kozinski? Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff? Yes. Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That concludes Finance, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Rist. Public Safety, Councilor Gomez, no meeting?
No, no report this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Appointment, Counselor Rothschild.
We're on appointments, okay. So we have three mayoral appointments that we voted three to nothing to recommend the confirmation of. Austin Sanders is one of them. He's been, he was already an auxiliary member of the Planning Board, and now a seat opened up, so he wants to be a full voting member. He actually came to our meeting, so it was nice to get to talk to him some about the work that he's been doing on the Planning Board. Catherine Harrison is a community member who is going to be, wants to join Affordable Fair Housing Partnership. I had a nice conversation with her. She moved here from Haydenville, I believe, and served on variety boards there. She's very interested in joining our School Reuse Committee, when we get to that. But she finds that, she thinks this committee will dovetail in terms of its mission and affordable housing in the city, affordable living. So that's why she's interested in it. So that's a good addition. And then Jackie Brusso Pereira is joining the Board of Registered Voters. Barb came and spoke in favor of her joining, and she's going to be a great addition to that. We needed another Democrat to join, because I guess someone left. So I move to confirm the following appointments. Austin Sanders to the Planning Board with a term ending 12/21/2022. Catherine Harrison to the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership with a term ending 12/31/2021. And Jackie Brusso Pereira to the Board of Registered Voters with a term ending 12/31/2023.
Motion and second, I just have a question, Councilor Rothschild. You had said Austin Sanders, 12/21/2021, did you?
12/2022.
But 12/21 or 31?
I said 12/31, sorry, typo, I did say that.
I heard 21, but that's fine.
No, you're right, because I had typed 21, so it was a typo.
All right. Any further discussion? Barbara? Erica Flood? Oh, oh, sorry. Go. Right, okay.
That wasn't I.
Okay, sorry. Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. The other, in terms of our agenda item, Emily Russo attended from, where does it turn? From the, sorry, I'm having audio situation. The Director Personnel for the City, just to give us some guidance on asking questions of appointees. So that was nice, I want to thank her for attending and giving her time to us. We made some headway in our discussion regarding the appointment process and kind of found the balance between having set questions, but having freedom to ask questions. So we're still working on it, but we identified, just so you know where we're going, we identified kind of three broad questions that we would ask of every candidate, but we can follow up to any of those questions. And they're broad enough that if you have another question, it will fit under one of those three places. So just to have a kind of a consistent structure. I also have a question about, we want to discuss, and this is just kind of more procedural, the creating of PSA-type videos. Harry? Sorry. Creating, various interjecting, PSA-type videos to educate the public about what the different committees do. And so that's part of the process of communication. So I don't know if that can be a sub-bullet if I add it to the agenda, or I have to write a memo to the council to get that on our agenda.
I think if it's an outcropping of your conversation around the amending of the rule, it's still part of the conversation.
Okay, so I'll just add it as a sub-point. That's something we're going to be talking about. All right, we don't have another meeting scheduled now, because the three of us are also serving on the Add-Hoc Principal Assessor Committee, and we don't have any nominees right now, so we're going to get through that before scheduling any more meetings.
Okay.
And so thus concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Rothschild. Councilor Zerret for ordinance.
Thank you, President Coniff. We had a public meeting earlier to change the operating hours of adult care dispensaries, so we'll remove that. In no particular order, the solar installation requirement on new construction, that's been discussed in, the committee in general is favorable of it, and that has been sent to the Planning Board, and there will be a joint public hearing on, I believe, the 16th. I just want to confirm that date. Yes, 2/16 at 6:00 PM for a joint public hearing with the Planning Board regarding solar installation requirements on certain new construction. We will, we have continued to discuss the zoning amendment for cannabis delivery. It will be taking that up again at our next meeting, which incidentally is next Wednesday, which is the 10th at 6:00 PM. And we had, in my opinion, one of the more moving committee meetings I've been involved with in my time on the council. We discussed the proposal to remove Columbus Day and replace it with Indigenous Peoples' Day. It was one of those types of meetings where there was a lot of communication leading up to it, and we weren't sure who was going to actually make it. But I was really happy to see a lot of individual representatives of a variety of indigenous representatives, both as individuals, as well as representing a variety of organizations. We had, there was a, we received a nice correspondence from Rhonda Anderson, who is the Western Massachusetts Commissioner on Indian Affairs, who supports the proposal, as well as communication from the United American Indians in New England, who also send us support. And we had a really wonderful and very moving meeting that was all positive. We had a couple new residents that were really nice to see participating in that discussion as well. As you all know, initially, this was proposed as an ordinance, and we had some discussion as to kind of the nuts and bolts of how this would work. And the committee decided to parse it out slightly differently. And so the initial language was changed back into a resolution, but we have language to change our ordinances to actually list city holidays, which is kind of a gap in our ordinance right now, for a variety of reasons. Cities, building closures, as well as various enforcement issues like parking, mention things about holidays, but there's no real note on the books where those, what those holidays actually are. So we created a subsection in, I believe it's Article 2 in general, which I'll submit for the next packet to lay out city holidays and include Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of where Columbus Day would normally be. And I recommend that everybody on the council watch that meeting just as a means of obtaining background and to watch the testimony of the various people who came and spoke. And after discussion with the committee, we would like to move ahead with setting a public hearing for this item, to make a motion to set the public hearing for March 3rd at 6:15 PM in these virtual chambers.
Second.
Motion and second to set a public hearing for the Indigenous Peoples' Day discussion. Any further discussion? Barbara? Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And as a quick footnote, many of the people who attended don't know if they can attend the full public hearing, which is again why I'd also recommend watching that meeting just as a matter of background and information. And again, as I noted, we are meeting next Wednesday, 10th, at 6:00 PM.
Councilor Zerret?
Oh, sorry.
So Finance is meeting at 5:00? So, I mean, Councilor Rist, well, we can either get you on a different account or we will end at the top of the hour, and you will have to start right after we end. So, Councilor Rist?
I fully don't believe it will take longer than a half hour to 45 minutes.
Okay.
So I was going to say, you may not be able to get on until right at the hour, Owen, if you'll tell Salem, but I think we should be okay.
Okay, great.
Okay, I'll pass that along to them. And we don't have any new business, so thus concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Zerret, and Property Councilor Zerret.
Oh, thank you, President Coniff. We will be meeting at our next meeting to hold the public hearing on the Housing Reduction Plan, as noted last time, again, that was unanimously recommended by the committee. And we have, we will be meeting this Friday at 5:30 PM. I apologize for the odd meeting time, there were just some awkward schedules to discuss the poll location request for the jointly owned poll on Main Street near South Street. I did have a conversation with the Eversource rep. Incidentally, the name that was on the packet was the incorrect one, although I did find it to be very apropos, because the individual's last name was Om, which seems like an interesting name to be when you're discussing energy, but I digress. So we'll be meeting this Friday at 5:30 to discuss that item. And President Coniff?
Yes.
I would like to set a public hearing for this item. I do not believe that it will take up a lot of time. So I would think we could talk about, we could discuss it at that next meeting, but if you feel there's too many public hearings, it's certainly reasonable to haul off till March.
No, other than the housing plan and the two, Finance that we just added, and then, Councilor Kozinski, whether we add the senior tax, we'll see. But it's fine, if you want to add to that.
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for the poll location request, the jointly owned poll on Main Street near South Street for our next meeting on February 17th, 2021, at 6:15 PM.
Second.
Motion second to set a public hearing for the poll location, Main Street near South Street, on 2/17. Any further discussion? Barbara? Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Craig Coniff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And again, uh, our meeting, next meeting is at 5:30, uh, this, uh, Friday, um, and thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Zaret. Rules and Government Relations, Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the committee met, met last week. Uh, we, uh, discussed, uh, two items, uh, in enough detail that we could take a vote on them, uh, so I'll, um, move on those first. Uh, the first one was, um, the conflict of interest sign-off request, uh, for, uh, Janet Tetra, who's the head of our, uh, Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. Uh, this basically concerns the, uh, Rental Relief Program, which, uh, we were discussing earlier. Uh, uh, Janet Tetra works for Community Action Pioneer Valley, um, and, uh, so it just creates, like, there's, there was something that we felt should be, or that, that she felt, uh, should be processed, um, through there. She had recused herself knowing that this was a, that they would possibly bid on this. Um, she had recused herself when the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership, uh, initially worked through this, so she's never touched this process any way and will continue to not touch it in any way. Um, but obviously, her, uh, thought leadership on that committee is very valued by the city, uh, so we were happy to vote. Uh, technically, it was two to zero because I lost, uh, internet, because we live in a place with really, really great internet. Um, so, uh, but it was, it would have been unanimous if I had been there, uh, to, uh, approve, uh, the, uh, conflict, uh, conflict of interest, uh, sign-off. So I will make a motion now to, um, I've never done one of these before, so I'm kind of winging it, but, uh, to approve, uh, the, uh, conflict of interest sign-off request for Janet Tetra.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the conflict of interest, uh, disclosure by Janet Tetra. Any further discussion? Barbara?
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Craig Coniff?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great. Um, the second item that we discussed was very easy. Uh, it was, uh, something that Counselor Rothschild had noted, that, um, currently, when, in our Rule 11J committee reports, there is a section that says, um, that, uh, uh, that, that things that were presented must be, uh, uh, presented and referred to the full council, uh, by that committee at least 90 days following the initial referral, which would suggest that we can't do it before those 90 days. I think that we all understand that that 90 days is a limit, so it should really say, no more than 90 days. Um, and so that is what we voted, uh, to do unanimously. Uh, so I will make a motion to amend, uh, Rule 11J to replace the words "at least 90 days" with "no more than 90 days."
Second.
Motion is second to amend, uh, City Council Rule 11J. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Craig Coniff?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great. Um, we're going to be meeting again next week. Uh, if I recall, we'd say the 11th at 5:00 PM. Does that sound right to everyone?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, and at that meeting, uh, Counselor Zaret, would you be able to attend that meeting? I'd kind of like to talk about, uh, the, um, 5D amendment that you had proposed.
Uh, I might have a conflict. Um, I might have a conflict, but, uh, Chairman Peak, is there a way that we could speak by phone and then?
Yeah, sure. If you can't make it, let's just make sure to talk beforehand and.
I have an appointment, um, but I could, happy to answer any questions and, and, um, there's no real rush to that either, so I'm happy to appear at a future time before the committee to answer any questions, but I unfortunately have a conflict next Thursday.
Okay, if we find, if we find it in a place where we have some follow-up questions for you, I guess we'll just continue it. But as you can see, uh, our agenda here is a little beefy right now, and I'd like to, uh, get that, uh, a little bit cleaned up. So, uh, okay, uh, that is all that I have at this time, so thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. Uh, moving on, we have, we've added a few ad hoc committees to our list for updates, so, uh, I'll just go back to Counselor Peak. Anything on ranked choice voting?
Um, we're like, we have what we think is a, uh, ordinance that's gonna work. Uh, we're not gonna send it to the full committee, uh, because we, having paid for the software, we're about to get the software and the voting machines, and what we want to do is do some test runs and make sure that operated the way that we are saying, that there's no weird little thing in this, like, software or the hardware that makes it so that technically what, you know, we just want to make sure that, that this, uh, we, we're, I'm 99% sure it will, but I, I just want to be certain, since we've never done this before. Um, so going forward, we're gonna be talking a bit more about voter education, uh, which is sort of the other big thing that I think we need to make sure we get right. Uh, and that's sort of where the conversations are right now, but you could expect, um, an ordinance, uh, to come before the council, uh, in the next couple, uh, the next month or two, I would guess, probably.
Counselor Peak, do you know when the ranked choice voting committee was assembled? What date?
I believe that it was assembled, well, no, I'm not certain.
Okay, because I think we, we have somewhere in our rules or in the charter that ad hoc committees, after a year, we just have to make sure and validate or vote that they are viable and should continue, so we can do that next time. Um, but we should, for all these ad hoc, Barbara, maybe what I'll ask you to do is to put the date of the origin of them, and then we'll know.
Yep.
On the agenda. That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, because I do think we've been around longer than a year, probably.
I do too, but, and we'll, we'll reaffirm you next meeting. Counselor Wrist?
I think because this deals with voting, it's important before the committee sends it to the full council that the city attorney review this, Counselor Peak. At least I feel that's very appropriate given this. And I'd rather it not come to the council and then have to go back to the city attorney, so I just recommend that.
Yeah, it's that, yes, I, I skipped over that step, but we certainly will be sending it to the city attorney, and then it will come to the council.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Senior Tax Workoff, Counselor Kozinski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we had an excellent meeting and was well-attended. The, uh, her honor was with us, and we made a presentation to the mayor at that time and received a favorable response, and she was very, although she had had originally lots of questions about the program, uh, back a year ago or so, I think many of those questions were answered, and I, I think we're just about ready to wrap up and make a presentation to the full council. I know we have a meeting to discuss that tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, so Thursday at 6 o'clock, the Senior Tax Workoff Committee. Uh, but I do recognize that we have, uh, time issues, so I would leave it to the chair to see when that might best fit in, whether it be at the next meeting or the following meeting.
Um. A- a- as soon as I say, let's leave it till March 3rd, March 3rd is gonna fill up, so I'm not sure we gain a lot by pushing it off. So, um.
Absolutely. And if there's some data that we need to still come up with, or there are specific questions, I imagine we could meet to discuss those.
Right.
So.
We'll set that. I, I mean, potentially, we will do a presentation to the full council on the 17th, but I suppose we can confirm that tomorrow night, and then we will let, um, folks know. My question to Counselor Wrist and/or Barbara is, this does not require a public hearing, but, uh, we do want to do a full-scale presentation to the city council. Would it fall into the public hearing, or would it fall under communication? Counselor Wrist?
Although it doesn't require a public hearing, which usually means advertising, I think we should set a public hearing, allowing the public to ask specific questions to whatever is presented. It, it doesn't need to be advertised, of course, and I, I don't believe it needs a public hearing, although I could be wrong. It is about taxes. Barbara, do you, does it need it? She's shaking her head no. But I would recommend a public hearing, and I'd also ask Counselor, uh, Kozinski, if you would send us all the documentation on this prior to the presentation. I guess in the packet would be sufficient, uh, just so we have a good, so we have questions, we can answer them.
Excellent.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Kozinski. Um, Ordinance Review, Counselor Rothschild.
Yes, um, we have an awesome committee. Thanks for putting us together. We, uh, we've organized ourselves. We've, we are reviewing a couple chapters a week. Um, we drafted a letter, um, that we are, I'll be sending to all the department heads and some of, and some of the committees and board chairs, um, asking them to look at the ordinances that pertain to their dealings and see if they have anything to, you know, for us to review or to call out to our attention, and we may be calling some of them before us if we have additional questions. Um, that's all I have to say. We're, our next meeting is Wednesday, February 24th at 6 o'clock. Do you want to add something? Counselor Wrist?
No, I, I just had a question. We jumped over it. Are we setting a public hearing for the Senior Tax Workoff or not?
We're gonna discuss that tomorrow night in our meeting, and.
Then we'll set it at the 17th. Okay, got it.
Yeah, I, uh, do we have to set a public hearing to have it be, do we have to physically set a public hearing and vote on it, or can we just use the time to open it up for the public?
Well, you could just have public speak for that time. I guess you could do that, Madam President.
Right.
You could put those under reports, and then with the understanding that there could be some public speak, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, it's just.
Okay, fine.
No, we had to, I didn't think we had to vote to have it, so, okay. Okay, uh, Counselor Rothschild, Principal Assessor Appointment Committee.
We've organized ourselves. Um, we, and we went to the executive session where we reviewed resumes and created the questions for the interviews. All our interviews are scheduled. Um, we will not come out of executive session until we have someone to recommend to this council. We're hoping one, the best candidate or candidates, hopefully just one. And that should be, the way our timeline is now, we should have someone recommended for our next meeting, those are city council meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we did new business, we did old business. Um, I believe I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Madam President, before we do that?
Yes.
I forgot to do something, and she's no longer on the council, uh, meeting. I would like to thank Valerie Bernier. She is retiring tomorrow. Tonight was her last meeting. We didn't have any questions for her. Over the years that she's been here, she has really helped us, uh, as a full councilman at the finance level, and I just want to wish her the best for her retirement. Um, and I'm really sorry I didn't think of it prior to this while she was here, but thank you, Val, and good luck.
Thank you, Counselor Wrist, absolutely. She's leaving us in a good financial position, which we appreciate, so thank you, Val. All right, uh, did I see any other hands before I called for a motion to adjourn? Counselor Kozinski, did you have?
Vote for adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn. Any discussion? Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Craig Coniff?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Good evening, everyone.